Good evening. I'm Kathleen Zastro and I am the clerk for the Board of Education. The July 11th, 2023 organizational and regular meeting is called to order at 6:32. Please rise and join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Tonight, we're going to be starting with the administration of the oath of office for our re-elected board member Krista Khan. Please stand and receive your oath. You can raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear
that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America
that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America
and the Constitution of the State of New York
and the Constitution of the State of New York
and that I will faithfully discharge the duties
and that I will faithfully discharge the duties
of the office of member of the Board of Education
of the office of member of the Board of Education
in the Penfield Central School District
in the Penfield Central School District
according to the best of my ability
according to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And now, our newly elected board member, Dr. Alameen Turner. Will you please stand and receive your oath? You can raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear
that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America
that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America
and the Constitution of the State of New York
and the Constitution of the State of New York
and that I will faithfully discharge the duties
and I will faithfully discharge the duties
of the office of member of the Board of Education
of the office of member of the Board of Education
and the Penfield Central School District
and the Penfield Central School District
according to the best of my ability
according to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations to you. Okay, now, we will have the election for officers and the nominations will be received for the president and vice president. Roberts' rules of order does not require a second to the motion, but if one of the board members wishes to second the motion as a show of support, it will be accepted. Then, after the nominations are closed, we'll take the vote. So, the meeting is now open for nominations for the office of board president for the 2023-24 school year. Do I have any nominations, board members?
Yes, I would like to nominate Dr. Emily Roberts for this position. Dr. Roberts has served as a board member for several years. She's been actively involved as a board member and she is a true advocate for all students.
Second. Nicole, second. Do we have any other nominations? Okay, so seeing none, I will close the nominations and we will call for a vote. All of those in favor for Emily Roberts to be the president? Okay, and none opposed? So, congrats to Dr. Roberts. Jumping the gun. Please stand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear
that I will support the Constitution
that I will support the Constitution
of the United States of America
of the United States of America
and the Constitution of the State of New York
and the Constitution of the State of New York
and that I will faithfully discharge the duties
and that I will faithfully discharge the duties
of the office of president of the Board of Education
of the office of president of the Board of Education
and the Penfield Central School District
and the Penfield Central School District
according to the best of my ability
according to the best of my ability.
Okay, congratulations. And now, we will open the nominations for the office of vice president for the 23-24 school year. Do I have any nominations for vice president?
I would like to nominate Mrs. Kristen Hawley for vice president. She has been a wonderful ally and support to me as a new board member. I really appreciate her work ethic and her clarity and how she reviews documents because she sees things that I would never would. And I think she will be a fabulous vice president.
Okay? Any seconds? Okay. Okay, we have a motion by Krista and seconded by Emily to appoint Kristen Hawley as president, as vice president of the Board of Education. Are there any other nominations? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close the nominations and we will call for a vote. All of those in favor? Okay, and none opposed? And congrats to Kristen. Okay, so you can please repeat after me. I do solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear
that I will support the Constitution
that I will support the Constitution
of the United States of America
of the United States of America
and the Constitution of the State of New York
and the Constitution of the State of New York
and that I will faithfully discharge the duties
and that I will faithfully discharge the duties
of the office of vice president
of the office of vice president
of the Board of Education and the Penfield Central School District
of the Board of Education and the Penfield Central School District
according to the best of my ability
according to the best of my ability.
Okay, and congrats to Kristen. Thank you, everyone. And now, I will turn the meeting over to our new board president, Dr. Emily Roberts.
I have a recommended action that the board approves, the July 13th, 2023 agenda as submitted. May I have a motion and a second?
No move.
Second.
Motion by
Kristen.
Kristen. Second by Kristen. Oh, that's right. I'm on, I'm off to a great start. Can we have a vote? All those in favor, raise your hand. Okay, all in favor and none opposed? Awesome. Okay, now, the hearing, our public hearing, it is opened at 6:39 for the code of conduct.
We have members from the Children's Institute with us this evening. So, if you want to come on up, I believe you're presenting. The clicker is there. Slides are ready to go. And, yeah, right there. Just as you're getting set up, I just wanted to say thank you and I really appreciate Dr. Emily Roberts. She actually knows exactly what she's doing, but what you're doing really is showing our students that are here with robotics and everyone watching that it's okay to make mistakes and not know everything
It is.
and learn as you go. And so, I really appreciate that. Your modeling is very helpful for me. So, thank you very much.
This is the second time I modeled it, but that's okay.
It was wonderful. Congratulations to both of you, Kristen as our new president and vice president. I just want to acknowledge too, real quick, is that we are, there are two board members who couldn't be here this evening due to other commitments and so, and also just want to quickly thank, because I can't help it, but you see flowers on our desks and our table and that is from former board member Barb Babiars, who stopped by, although she hasn't been on the board for a full year now, to just say thank you to our board members in district office for their service. So, thank you, Ms. Babiars, for, again, showing your support as a district resident and former board member. Thank you. And I'll, was that a good segue? So, I'll turn it over now to, for the code of conduct. This is a public hearing and then the code of conduct is online. People can go and view it and we accept any feedback from anybody in the community for 30 days and then it'll come back to the board either looking exactly the same or potentially some changes for vote in August, the August meeting. So, again, I'll turn it over. If you could introduce and then it's up to you to run through those slides.
Sounds great. Thank you. Can you hear me okay? This is recording? Okay. So, my name's Elizabeth Devaney. I'm the director of the Whole Child Connection at Children's Institute and my colleague Marion Mustafa George was also actually much more involved in this project than I was, but it is her birthday tonight, so we let her go ahead and celebrate. So, I'm going to share kind of our process. We've been partnering with the district for a number of years on some different initiatives around social emotional learning and for the past year around this revision process for the code of conduct. Children's Institute has been around for about 60 years, supporting the community around social emotional development of children. And the Whole Child Connection in particular does a lot of work with districts around the area and whole child approaches and we've worked with a number of communities around here on the similar revision process for the code of conduct. So, I'm just going to kind of walk us through the process and where we're at, what the new code includes, and then open it up for some questions. So, this is really teeny, probably can't read it terribly well, but we put together a large group of stakeholders from across the community, across the whole district, to engage in a pretty robust revision process. And the last revision was around 2016, so quite a lot has changed since then. If you think about things like social media and cell phones, even just those two items, the code really didn't incorporate anything related to those, for example. And so, it was time for a really robust revision and so, we wanted to do it right and really take our time and be really intentional to do it over the course of the year. So, the stakeholder groups, you can see in that middle column there, we had students' families, staff from a variety of different kinds of roles, mental health staff, administrators, instructional staff, those who are involved in informal spaces with students like the lunchroom and transportation. We really wanted to bring in a wide variety and we had a couple of board of education members as well. Nicole was on that group. So, it was really a wide range of people who were involved in this group that met over the course of a year. So, you can see, we met monthly there for about 10 meetings. And we started out with just kind of reviewing data, thinking about kind of what is our role and responsibility as a code of conduct review committee. And then, we looked at the current code, talked about what we thought needed to be changed, what are some things that are really core that we needed to keep. We looked at exemplar documents from other communities that have done similar work and then went through a process of developing. So, there was sort of a chunk of time in the winter where we were really writing, developing new sections, and then had a very robust feedback model that I'll tell you a little bit more in detail to make sure we were kind of capturing feedback from the community, done some revisions to get to this point we're at now where we have a final draft. So, as I said, large stakeholder group met for 10 months to do a variety of pieces, but we also had a smaller writing team that was made up of some folks at the, some administrators and district level staff who were really involved in kind of the core implementation pieces for the code. So, that smaller team could be more nimble. We spent, or that group spent hours really sitting down drafting, thinking about specific content, writing specific sections. And then, as I said, we had these feedback, we called them accordion feedback sessions with a range of folks to get input. So, one of the things that I think is really important to understand is sort of the framing around a new code. We wanted to take a very integrated approach and align what was happening in the district with the new code, because if you think about it, a code of conduct is really just a document. It's just a piece of paper until you think about the practices and the way it's getting implemented. And so, our goal was really to focus on what are, you know, the district's priorities right now and moving forward into the future and how can we craft a code of conduct that's responsive to what students need, what families need, where the district is headed. So, these four kind of graphics up here represent those core features. So, the culturally responsive and sustaining education framework, the district's been working really deeply in that, restorative practices, thinking about how do we implement restorative discipline, social emotional learning, and then a multi-tiered system of support. And so, we wanted to integrate all of those components into the new code so that the document can live for a number of years without having to go through this full revision process. Again, that it's really representing where the district's headed. And so, that was our approach. And I guess, and one other thing I would say about the kind of foundational piece is that, you know, we don't want a code that's just a list of rules and consequences and that's focused really on the punitive components of discipline. We want a code that is supportive of students. It's really thinking about how, what's the skill building behind this? How do we create a learning community where, yes, we're holding kids accountable for their behavior, but we're also thinking about it from a position of support and strength? So, what do students need to be successful in creating this safe learning community? So, that was really our framing in a lot of ways, was thinking about, you know, how do we create a student-centered document that is taking students' strengths into account and thinking about where they may have, just not have skills yet that they need support around? So, again, once we had this kind of new draft ready to go, we shared it out with a wide variety of stakeholders because we wanted to kind of test how this thinking and new framing worked for the community. So, you can just see kind of the list here of dates and the people we talked to. We brought it to the instructional leadership team. We talked to the union reps, teachers, paraprofessionals, social workers and mental health staff. We had two student groups who were fabulous, gave us a ton of input. We did have the community conversation in May, so parents were able to come to that and share their questions, clerical and recess monitors, and we did talk with also the extracurricular staff. So, we really wanted to get a ton of feedback and I think we had, I don't know, hundreds of pages of input that we actually incorporated in real time. So, the draft that you now have or that's now up for public comment actually incorporates all that feedback. We really made a bunch of changes. So, I feel pretty confident saying that I think we have a document here that represents, you know, the community's needs and desires around thinking about discipline in a different So, what is new? There's two main chunks that we worked on. One was really thinking about how do we want to talk about behaviors and consequences in a different way? So, we have a tiered approach now to thinking about what are the behavioral concerns and what are the responses and interventions associated with them? One of the challenges with the old document was that it was really just a laundry list of, you know, here's all the things you might do wrong and here's all the possible consequences. And it wasn't clear to anyone which consequences went with which behaviors and what role different people played in handing out those consequences. And so, we wanted, A, a document that would be much more, you know, clear for everyone, for students, for families, for staff, to understand what's going to happen here, you know, what are the appropriate consequences or responses that go with each different kind of behavior, you know, and who's responsible for what? Is this something that teachers need to handle at the classroom level? When is it appropriate to refer to the office or to administrator? When do we call in, you know, the mental health team? All of those kinds of things. We wanted a lot of clarity for all the staff and students and families, so everybody really understands. And we also wanted to think of this tiered approach, which matches on the multi-tiered system of support the district's working toward, so that there could be kind of an understanding of there are these sort of level-one behaviors that are just all those annoying things that happen in the classroom or, you know, in those informal spaces where students are just trying to test out different things. They may not have the skills yet. They're learning, they're kids, you know, how do we address those kinds of behaviors? And then, are there more serious things that are going on that need a different kind of consequence? And what happens when things are persistent and it doesn't get better with those, at that level one? So, the new tiers are really trying to sort of address that, all of that stuff. And then, we have a range of policies that we revised. So, we, things like the dress code, students got really involved in rewriting the dress code, which was a lot of fun, and we're also involved in the digital citizenship and technology use policy. There was also policies around suspension, use of restraint, some of the legal requirements. And we did run it by the district's lawyers to make sure we were including everything that's required from a legal standpoint in the state, at the state level. But just updating all those policies to make sure they were current and reflected sort of where things are today. So, all those policies have been updated. And then, where we are now, Dr. Pottamarti kind of talked about this, we're in this 30-day comment period, bringing it here to, for this initial presentation. We are going to work with the summer leadership team meeting to start thinking about implementation because I think another really important piece of this is how do we roll it out? Again, it's just a piece of paper until it gets put into practice. And so, what are the things we need to do to make sure it's really clear to all of the staff, families and students? So, that's going to be starting over the summer. Once it's adopted, in the fall would be kind of the formal rollout. There's a plan for some student and family videos to help really families and students understand the changes, for professional development for staff, so that there can be clear kind of understanding of what's new. And then, we're going to do some ongoing support next year with the ILT, with the instructional leadership team around kind of problem solving, what challenges are coming up, you know, where are any of the new pieces raising questions, and then problem solving and brainstorming about how to continue, you know, the process of orienting everyone to this new document. So, I think that is it and I am open for any questions and certainly others in this room are very involved in the process, so.
Before, if you don't mind, just before the board asks questions, if they have, I just want to also say thank you to the Children's Institute and the work. And you referenced the partnerships we've had in the past and they've been nothing but exceptional in terms of truly supporting our students and our staff and this was, to me, no different. It was a long process. I would be ashamed if I didn't thank publicly Dr. Tasha Potter, who really, we talked about the code of conduct and I said, hey, why don't you take this and run with it? And my goodness, so really just a huge thank you because Dr. Potter has been really the liaison with the Children's Institute in keeping myself and the board and the community in the loop with our board meeting and updates. And also, a thank you to our board members who were on the committee. This has been a long process, so pre-COVID, everything in my life is pre and post-COVID. Pre-COVID, the policy committee, which is made up of three board members and myself and others that we bring in, looked at revamping the code of conduct and were making changes and then sort of COVID hit and we really determined that, thanks to Dr. Potter's leadership, is bringing all of those stakeholders to the table was so much more important than doing it in isolation and then bringing a draft. So, the amount of time, I just can't thank you enough for like the 10 accordion, 10-plus accordion sessions and getting feedback from so many different places. And so, thank you very much and thank you, Dr. Potter. I know many people had hands in it, but it was, it was a lot of work and so, thank you. Questions for the?
Comments, board members' questions?
I don't have a question, I have a comment. I would just like to reiterate the fact that the range of stakeholders that were involved, I think, is so important, especially our students, because this is why we are here and I think their voice is really vital. So, I really appreciate that we really looked at all stakeholders when we were creating this and I really also appreciate that robust or thorough revision of it, but also that you just didn't create the document, that we're thinking about, okay, now what are we going to do with it? How are we going to implement it to make sure that it's effective and it suits our purposes? We don't want to just, you know, like you said, create that document and then, now what? So, I really appreciate that we've been very thorough in this process, so thank you for that.
Okay, now that you just, that's what I was going to say.
Sorry.
Okay. You can say ditto.
Ditto. All right, so the hearing is now open to public comments pertaining to the code of conduct. Additionally, residents who wish to comment on the policy may email the district clerk at kzastro, K-Z-A-S-T-R-O, at penfield.edu by August 10th, 2023.
I would just add, and I want to point out especially for the public, is a comment Elizabeth made around really creating a code of conduct that as a district we can grow into. And I think it's really important to point out is that our current code of conduct, the one that we've been living under for a long time, was written, I think, I think we said it was originally created in '75 or '74, somebody had it, '73. So, it's been there and our practices don't align to that code anymore. We've changed lots of things. We've really tried many different things in terms of supporting students and staff and families. And so, this really incorporates what our current practices are around code of conduct concept, as well as where we want to go as a, as a school district, as a public school district in New York State. So, it's a lot, you mentioned the training and the professional learning and that communication. It's also the piece that the vast majority of our kids may never have a connection to the code of conduct. The reality is, the code of conduct is the things you should be doing and the things maybe you shouldn't be doing and we need to learn and grow. But one of the things we heard from our students over and over is they just want clear, consistent answers. And this code of conduct, I encourage folks to go and take a look at it. It's on our webpage. If you go to policies, it's under policies under review and I think it really does have a lot of those voices in there. And again, thank you very much. I see this as a year's worth of work that brought in so many people and I'm really proud of what we have and know that based on some comment that might come from board or district or community, we might make some, you know, potentially some tweaks before the August meeting, but, but it is going to be a new code, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you. It was a wonderful process. We really enjoyed our time with the district, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, so, this hearing is closed at 6:57 PM. We are now on to regular business. It is a, it is recommended that the board approves the following consent agenda. Approval of minutes of the June 13th, 2023 meeting as submitted. The acceptance of recommendations from the committee on special education. The acceptance of recommendations from the committee on preschool special education. The acceptance of recommendations from the superintendent for personnel changes. The request to approve the recommended bidders, Headwater Foods Incorporated and Upstate Niagara Cooperative Incorporated per Monroe Two Orleans Bosse's cooperative bid for milk and juice supply, RFB 2047-23 for the period of July 1st, 2023 to June 30th, 2024. The request to approve Angel's Heart Medication or Medical Transportation LLC for RFB 237. Alternative Student Transportation Services for the 2023-2024 school year with two optional one-year renewals. And the approval of request to dispose of unserviceable textbooks. May I have a motion and a second that the Board of Education approves the consent agenda?
Still moved.
Second. That's a motion by Krista, second by Kristen. Can we have a vote, please, board? All those in favor and none opposed? We are on to treasurer's report. It is recommended that the treasurer's report, including the cash report, general fund cash report, the general fund revenue status report, general fund budget status report, school lunch fund cash report, and school lunch fund revenue and expense, expense budget report for the month ending May 31st, 2023 be approved. May I have a second, or a motion and a second? Excuse me.
Still moved.
Second. That's a motion by Krista, second by Kristen. Can I have a vote, please? All those in favor and none opposed? We are on to special reports. I will turn that over to you.
Great. Now, I'm showing people how, you know, I also, all right, here we go.
Yeah, it happens.
Here we go. All right, so we have two special reports this evening. The first is our robotics presentation and then followed by an update on enrichment and our review that we conducted this year. And so, I will turn this over now to our robotics team that is here. You have some slides in here that I believe are right after this. Yep, so it will start here. And I'm not sure from the, what community can see, but we have a number of robotics members here, as well as some advisors and mentors and volunteers, so thank you so much.
Can you hear me? Hello?
Yes.
All right, perfect. Hi, my name is Morgan and I'm going into my third year on the robotics team and I'm a rising senior. This past year, I had the opportunity to be an impact presenter during competition season and I was also the publicity coordinator on the student leadership team.
Hi, my name is Akob. I'm going into my junior year and my second year on the team. This previous year, I was a super scouter during competitions and on the programming sub-team.
Hi, my, hi, my name is Colston. I'm going into my second year on team in my sophomore year. Last year, I was a super scouter, presented at two of our, two of our conferences at competitions and this year, I'm taking a position of edc coordinator on our leadership team.
So, we are Penfield High School's first robotics team, made up of 36 students, 13 of which are new students, and we have 30 mentors guiding us. Seven of our mentors are
Seven of our mentors are L3 Harris employees, and seven of them are alumni. Our lead mentor is Larry Lewis, and three of our teachers are also our mentors, Mr. Wisebroad, who is an art teacher, and Mr. Pizzo, Mr. Levine, who are both tech teachers. Our first competition was at RIT, the Finger Lakes Regional. There, we won the first, the Regional Impact Award, which is the highest award in first. And our second competition was in Albany, the Tech Valley Regional. There, we won the Regional Engineering Inspiration Award. Our third and final competition was the First World Championships, where we flew all the way down to Texas and competed with hundreds of teams. There, we placed 38 out of 78 in the daily division.
Our team is considered an impacted team. The impact award is the most prestigious award a team can win in the first robotics program. The team that receives this award at a competition is deemed the team that best embodies the mission of first. We, we had the opportunity to win this award at our first competition this year, and we are now tied for second place in the world with most impact award wins, coming at 11 awards. The impact award consists of a seven-minute presentation, a five-minute Q and A with judges. We also practice, sorry, we practice for the presentation and Q and A in the build season. We also write an essay, an executive summary, and create an impact video about all the stuff that our team does. We also held and attended conferences at each of our competitions dedicated to the impact award, and we assist other teams in their preparation for presenting as well. This past year, we also were able to have 95 outreach events, which was a lot of outreach for our team, but we were super happy to come up with that number. Outreach is super important to us, and we help out a lot of local organizations, including the Penn Field Library, Ronald McDonald House, Rochester City School District, Penn Field Food Health, Dimitri House, Happy Birthday Cha Cha Cha. We also help with Girl Scout Troops and Boy Scout Troops and Children-Awaiting Parents, which is a local foster organization. We also make sure to help all levels of first, not just the high school level. We mentor FLL teams, which is the elementary school level of first, and have weekly help sessions. We also mentor the FTC team, which is the middle school level of first robotics, as well as other FR team teams or the high school level of robotics in the area. This year, we also had the opportunity to hold the FLL and FTC qualifier at the high school, which is one of their main competitions for both the elementary and middle school levels. And this year, we had a new event, the FLL kickoff, which helped to kick off the competition season for the elementary schoolers and get them excited for all the new stuff to come.
We also do advocacy. In New York, we've done things like the New York Advocacy Conference, which we've held for three years now. Teams from all over New York come, and we teach them how to be better advocates for STEM in New York's government. We're also working on passing New York State Bill 83445 and New York State Bill S1576. If passed these bills, we'll allocate grants to first teams and Title I schools. And last year, we passed a legislative resolution declaring November 8th as STEAM Day in New York, which is huge because it covers all of New York for this. For our federal advocacy, we do a lot more like attending the National Advocacy Conference, which is like the New York Advocacy Conference, except that it teams from all over the US come and learn about advocacy. This year, we had two students from our team intern with Student Association with First STEM Advocacy because of their work in advocacy. We've also advocated for the Chips and Science Act and the Every Student sees Eat Act, specifically Title IV Part A and Title IV Part B. We advocate for increased funding for robotics teams and STEM programs across the US because we believe that this is really important to us.
In January, that's when our build season begins. That's when we learn the game for the year, and we actually start building the robot, you start building the robot. First, we begin prototyping, just jotting down any idea that can help us build the robot. And then we begin actually designing and building the parts. This is when we actually put into practice the things that we learned. During build season, we, there is a lot going on, so we hold integration meetings to make sure that everyone is on the same page. The average student usually puts in about 20 hours a week, but most experienced students put in about 40. There are a lot of benefits going for us, for, for us first students. Like, we get to attend national-level conferences, like the National Advocacy Conference, the New York Advocacy Conference, and even being able to go all the way to Texas and Albany, being able to go to competitions, meet people, meet other teams, meet their robots. And we can even get a ton of scholarship opportunities, and over 95% of our alumni are in STEM fields.
We are leaders in the first community. Our goal is to not only build leaders on our team, but help other teams as well. Our team is student-led, and as a student-led team, we have our own student leadership team, which plans our preseason, guides our team, and pretty much oversees all of our sub-teams and efforts on team while planning every event that we do. Even if students aren't on our leadership team, there are plenty of opportunities to learn these valuable leadership skills, like the Leadership Bootcamp that we hold every year, where we invite our students to come and participate in fun activities that help grow their leadership skills. We've also done multiple conferences, like our outreach, leadership, and advocacy conferences, where we come show teams how we do these efforts on our team and help them improve or start their own efforts. We also mentor and assist other first teams in the area and around the world to help them throughout their season. So now on to what we're really about. First is more than robots. We also do outreach, advocacy, marketing strategy, and so much more. Every year, our students and mentors build and design our robot from scratch with no instructions, and we run our events and meetings year-round, so there is no off-season. Anyone is welcome on our team. We have spots for everyone with every interest available, and you are welcome regardless of your previous experience.
District support has been a huge goal for our team. We would love to secure district funding to help reduce the cost for attending competitions and fundraising efforts. Funding increases accessibility for everyone, and because this was such a life-changing program for all of us, we don't want a financial barrier to prevent other students from being able to join our team and attend competitions. We also would love a permanent year-round practice facility. This year, we used a temporary practice facility that we shared with a few other teams, but we would love a permanent location, not only for us, but for the younger levels of first and for other teams in the area. We also would love continued support of our district-wide STEAM Week. As you heard earlier, November 8th was declared New York State STEAM Day, and we really decided to take full opportunity of this accomplishment by not having a day of events, but an entire week. We were able to help bring STEAM awareness and accessibility to every single student in the Penn Field School District, and we also were able to have a fundraiser at the Webster Barnes and Noble. We would love to have more support of STEAM Week and to continue to have an entire week dedicated to STEAM again this upcoming year. We also would love increased teacher involvement in first teams at all levels. Having more teachers involved means more students can be involved. And again, because this was such a life-changing opportunity, we really don't want to have to prevent other students from being able to join. And we also would love to have first robotics as a part of the district curriculum. Bringing more awareness to first as a whole in the program will help other students to have more STEAM accessibility and find something that they're really passionate about, passionate about in the school. And we also welcome you to attend any of our meetings. We meet on Tuesdays from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM in G3. We also have the Grateful Red Musical Festival coming up on September 9th. This is one of our main events, and it's a super fun opportunity to not only see our team, but also hear local bands perform in the community. We also have Ruckus, which is at the end of October, and it is a great opportunity to see what competition is like. We invite other teams from around the area to come and compete against each other in our off-season competition. Rally is another one of our off-season competitions, but this one is held at the end of February, and is a great opportunity for teams to practice with their robot with the new game that they received in January. And we also invite you to come to any of our outreach events. We have outreach events year-round, so if you're ever interested, we have plenty of opportunities for you to attend. Thank you. And now I'm going to give the microphone to Colston for the robot part of our presentation.
So, this is our robot that we built from the last year, 2023. Our robot does a lot of things like the swerve drive base that we have. It has four motors, and it can move in pretty much any direction. Now, some of you are probably wondering what that thing on front of our robot is, and that's our arm. We designed, I did it to lift up and to grab these game pieces, as we're going to demonstrate now. Yeah, our arm does that. But we basically use these giant screws to lift up our arm, which can extend and on its three stages, just like that. Yeah, it's fun, the robot. Yeah, so you might have just seen our robot lift up there. That's a parking brake that we designed for an aspect of the field. So there was a spot at the end of our game where we had to park our robot on a specific surface, and it's made of a material that's sometimes inconsistent at grip. So we developed all of this so our robot doesn't move when other robots go to park in that same area. Yeah. And we can activate it and deactivate it whenever we want, so, oh, we can use it whenever we need. All right, and that was it for the robot demo. Now, we're open to any questions, if you have any.
I think I gotta give a round of applause first.
Board members, questions or comments?
I have a, I have a question for you guys. Or, well, more so, well, question and a comment. Great presentation. Really impressive. You mentioned that it was life-changing. So can you just talk a little bit about that?
Um, yeah. So for me personally, I was super shy and quiet when I first started. So the team first was able to help me really develop my presentation skills and my public speaking skills. Now, presenting is one of my favorite things to do, and I was able to be an impact presenter last year, which meant I was giving a presentation about our team to a panel of judges and answering questions for it. It also helped me to figure out what my passion was and what I wanted to do in college as well. When I started the team, I knew I liked math, and I was like, oh, I'll be a math teacher. But throughout being on the robotics team, I actually discovered that I'm really passionate about engineering, and I am now looking to applying to colleges for industrial engineering, which is something that I would not have known if I was not on the robotics team. The team also was able to increase my friend group a lot. Again, I was super quiet, so I didn't have super many friends before joining, but I was really able to find a community on the team, and it was something that I really appreciated too, that I had people throughout the school of all grades and all age levels who were my friends, so.
Nice, thank you.
Anyone else?
You mentioned 20 hours a week and sometimes 40. So what does that look like? Is that extra time after school? Is that everybody working on their own part of it at home?
So for us, I'm just, sorry, I'm gonna set that down. So 20 hours a week, we usually meet Tuesdays to Thursdays from 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM, and then students come to work on the robot, to work with the CAD design or like the digital design of our robot. There's also integration meetings, practice meetings. When I was an impact presenter, I was also practicing my presentation, writing a script. So there's lots of different aspects that you can work on. We also come in on Saturdays and Sundays. Saturday is usually from 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM, and then Sunday is from 1:00 PM to 9:00 PM. So that's usually from January, which is when build season starts. It's usually like the first weekend in January, all the way until our competitions in March. And then we keep usually meeting around those hours between March and April, when our competitions are taking place, so we can make robot repairs if there's something that we notice that needs to be changed or tweaked. So we have a lot of time that we dedicate towards building a robot during build season.
I have a question. Is there room for anyone on the team? Is there room for somebody who is not into math, but loves the community and?
Yes, there is, most definitely is. Personally, I haven't worked a ton with the robot. I love math, but I haven't done a lot robot-wise. I do a lot of marketing things on the team, but I personally love that, and I will definitely say there is always something to work on on the team. If you want to try something new, there are so many people here who are so knowledgeable in everything, that there's always something that you can learn. Or if you want to stick to what you know, you can still do that, too. It's a great community, though, for anyone who's interested in being a part of the team in any way, shape, or form.
I have a question and then a comment. Is there room for people on the team that maybe can't commit to all of that timeframe? Because that's a lot of work.
Yes. A lot of students on our team actually participate in other extracurriculars as well. I, for one, am on a dance, I dance at a different dance studio as well. So I cannot come every single night of the week, but we all have different amounts that we can commit to it. We have an achievement system, actually, so the more that you're able to participate, it helps to reduce the cost that you pay for competitions. But even if, so even if you can't attend every single meeting, it's still okay. There are still other opportunities to participate, and we just tell people to participate when you can and when you want to.
And then I have a comment. So first of all, I'm so, every year I'm impressed, but this year, I don't know if it just sunk in more, but the things that you do, like, it's clear that you have real-life applications that you're learning, but I think you're learning so much more. I heard you say welcoming, and if, like, everyone's welcome, so that really connects to our district priorities of making sure everyone has, that we have a welcoming and affirming environment. But your advocacy that you're doing and the outreach, I think you're just showing what we need more in our world, of just, there's more beyond ourselves. And I just am so grateful that we live in a community that's producing children that are going to give back as adults. So kudos to you for being the models for the rest of us.
Thank you.
Yeah, folks, keep sprinkling your magic all over the place. We need it.
And I'm not gonna go behind you again, like, I'm gonna talk before you talk, because she always is taking what I say. Great presentation. It's one of my favorites to watch. I would say the same thing, like, your advocacy, it shows, your passion shows through not just your presentation, but just all of the things that you do. And it's so great to see kids that are leading this and that, you know, are so passionate about this and showing it to other kids to hopefully get that same, you know, feeling and sense of camaraderie and want to be a part of something. So I think that's amazing. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
It's awesome.
I would just add, as a superintendent, I'm always proud to go to the RIT competition because you should know that Penn Field, without a doubt, is the best-dressed robotics team at that event every time. I walk in, I usually bring one of my kids, a little one, and then I'm like, where are they? And it's like, oh, there they are. So it's the pants and the shirts and everything else. So I just, it's huge. And for the team members, having, having a little guy come into kindergarten next year, I'm revisiting the fact of, whether you know it or not, the role models you are for our younger students. So you talked about outreach and going places, like you were at the Cobble's Ice Cream Social to end of the year sort of celebration, and, and watching students, little kids, absolutely all over that robot, and never did any of you get, like, frustrated or, you know, like, you know, like, it was amazing, and these kids look at you like, like rock stars. You're, you're the older kids, and, and they look at this and see how cool it is and your role models and all, and all that you do. So thank you so much.
Dr. Potter, no biggie.
Yeah. Let me ask, would it be okay if Dr. Maloney asked the question?
I, I don't have a question. I have some really great news. Because of the summer, you probably haven't yet heard, or maybe you have, that Mrs. Watt worked with the other principals, and we will be celebrating STEAM Day, STEAM Week across all the buildings again in November. I believe it's the week of November 8th. I believe it's the week of November 8th, am I right? And we've already, when the year turned over, the new budget season, we've already purchased the supplies for the kiddos do Steam activity at the elementary level. And so we are move, you're moving forward. We got it.
Thank you so much. We really appreciate it.
Thank you again. I think another round of applause for incredible. And just, one of the things I love about robotics, I know we've got some advisors in here and mentors, volunteers, and we didn't see any of them because really it's so student-centered in how much our students are at the helm. So thank you so much, but also thanks to all the adults that support you throughout the year. Thank you. Awesome. Yeah, so we will transition here to our second special report. Maybe we'll give just a minute for the robot. I don't want to upset it. Don't want to upset it. But, what's that? Yeah, oh, and our, and our students know you are more than welcome to stay for the rest of this long meeting. But if you would like to leave and enjoy the rest of this evening, thank you so, so much. And I will ask Christine Treasure to come up for our second special report. And this is our Penfield Center School District Enrichment Program Review. Thank you to Dr. Maloney, who worked closely with Monroe and Bosse's Christine Treasure to conduct this program review. And we're looking forward to getting sort of a, where were we? Where are we and where we should be?
So, Dr. Putnam, if you don't mind, I'll start by reminding the community and the board that over the course of this past school year, we enlisted the help of Christine Treasure, Director of School Improvement at Monroe Bosse's for facilitating a review of the enrichment program, K-12. And as Christine and I were preparing for this presentation, we noted that it's important that the community and the board recognize that this is a program review, not an evaluation. And we are very fortunate in Penfield, enrichment is not mandated. It's not something that New York State says we have to provide. And it's something that as a community, as a school board, as a district office team, we have over many years supported and encouraged. So the guiding questions for the review were, how does the K-12 enrichment program align with the four principles of the Culturally Responsive Sustaining Education Framework? And do all students have access to enrichment opportunities during each year of their K-12 experience? And as Dr. Putnam mentioned, in January Christine presented a status quo update to the board on the progress of the program review. And tonight she will be sharing the results of the program review. And then at the end, I'm going to share some modifications that we have already put into place for next year at the elementary level. So I will turn it over to Christine.
Great, thank you, Leslie. Thanks for that transition, because it's a hard act to follow of going after the student piece. Although I will say, I feel like there are definitely many threads and common themes, both from the presentation from Children's Institute and what you just heard from the students in that robotics team to what I'm gonna talk about. And that kind of speaks to the first piece. The question was around access and, and overall strengths, struggles, and suggestions for moving the program forward. And so a big piece of the conversation, so in January, again, I outlined kind of where I, what I had done. I'd looked at a lot of documentation. I had had some initial conversations with the department. I had done a look at some data. But then the second half of the year, I really went further into then some of that data and into stakeholder groups, almost similar to Children's Institute in terms of looking across the stakeholder groups and asking questions around the program. And one of the, the two big pieces that I think have been common themes is big-picture thinking around aligning your beliefs and values with your program. And I think you have a board policy, and the enrichment program's mission and guiding principles align to your, your district mission and vision. Your strategic plan, however, is from 2017. And since then, you have done a lot of this work in diversity, equity, and inclusion, particularly around the framework, the Culturally Responsive Sustaining Education Framework, and social-emotional learning. That seemed to be a piece that is referenced, but could be more clear and more developed in terms of common language around how those initiatives and goals and values inform the program. So that program design and the use of the time and the talent that you have really aligns to those beliefs and values. And in doing that, creates an ongoing opportunity for reflection of what's happening. Because a question that came up was, how, how do you know what's working, right? What is success? And defined against what, you know, what parts of your, your values, again, in your mission and vision. So that came up. And another piece was what I call both-and-thinking. There are aspects of the current enrichment program that really align in our service model similar to special education, where you're identifying high-ability learners through an identification process and providing specially-designed instruction as like, as the least restrictive environment for those students. In the same token, you've applied the RTI Response to Intervention Model, which is a general education model in math and ELA, particularly in a significant way at three through five. And in some ways, that's a piece that came up in terms of maybe an over-reliance or an overemphasis on that piece. At the same time, you do have services for all students where there is access beyond that identified group of students based on interests, based on readiness, that can be or sometimes are available to all students in this school-wide enrichment model. It comes up more readily at Bay Trail, the school-wide piece, given, I think, some of the RTI aspects at the elementary level. So those two kind of themes were throughout what I found. And so, again, the data piece, there was quantitative data that I looked at, and also then qualitative data. I, the data that we focused on was, was mainly around demographics. One of the things that's a little bit of a challenge around the demographics is just the small sample size of the students that we're looking at. Because currently, students who are identified through your identification process are the students that you're, you're tracking basically across grade levels. So they're in your system where we can see their level of participation. Some of your school-wide enrichment opportunities are not tracked in the same way. So it becomes trickier to really get a sense of who all the kids are. So again, I looked at a very small demographic, you know, sample size compared to your demographics. And generally, they mirror your district demographics and some of the national data that exists in terms of looking both female, male, participation, as well as the different groups. So one of the questions I had with Leslie was, how, what's, when you look at it from percentage, from a percentage point of view, what's a percentage? What variation in percentage is too much or too little, right? In terms of if I have Hispanic or Latino students, and I have 1% in our, in my fourth-grade enrichment group, and there are 4% in my total fourth-grade population, is that a reasonable variation or not? With state-level data, when we look at our state-level data and look at what we call disproportionality numbers, the numbers are much larger. So you're looking at a much bigger sample, national or statewide level of group. So it makes it kind of challenging to really, to, to look at that, I think, in, in, as an only element, I guess is the way I would put it. So what I had shared with Leslie is I really see it as a starting point, where I've provided that data back to the district, looking at for third through 12th grade, comparing the grade level to the enrichment, identified enrichment group that you have in your system. The one subgroup that I would say consistently was well over a discrepancy of more than five percentage points was your socioeconomic status grouping of students. So that was consistent. Other than that, there wasn't really consistency of over a 5% percentage gap. There were bits and pieces here and there, right? A couple of years where a group might have been, in some cases, two groups that were over-identified. Or, or, you know, over, meaning there are more students in enrichment in that 5% range than there are in that grade level. So I see it as a starting point and something for the district to look at and, and use as one area of focus, but also to start to look at and determine other data sets and other points that you might want to review around the quantitative piece. So beyond that, the qualitative piece was focus group work and surveys. And I think I shared in January, we used a consistent kind of common protocol or process with each of the different groups. I met with middle school and high school students, the enrichment teacher department administrators, parents. And teachers was too large of a group size to do as a meeting, so we developed a survey, and then I analyzed those survey results following the same, again, same protocol, which was really strengths, struggles, suggestions. And that protocol, first, in each, in each of the environments with each of the groups, participants had time to kind of individually think about that and notate for themselves strengths, struggles, suggestions. Then they came together and shared in a small group to find commonalities across the group. And then those commonalities were shared, and we discussed any additional like trends, patterns, or reflections that that, you know, an analysis kind of of what that information shared with the whole group. So strengths. And again, these are really where I saw patterns or trends, where the message was fairly consistent and common. Across the board, people see enrichment as a benefit for students. They recognize that academic challenge is a good thing and that it's important for students to extend and enrich their learning. Now, I will say that goes beyond just for your identified students, right? That was a definite value of all of the stakeholder groups, along with the positive, positive social outcomes. So there was comments made around both opportunities for students to be with like peers, peers that they feel comfortable with, that they understand and support, and that the enrichment program provides that emotional support and opportunity for kids. Another strength that was identified was there have been adjustments made to the identification process to be more culturally responsive, given some of the work that has been done. So again, continuous kind of modifications to the project challenge identification system at the third-grade level where students are initially identified, but then also the use of the SAGES, which is a screening assessment for gifted elementary and middle school students used after third grade, and Talent Hunt form that is introduced at the middle school level. So I know that was one of the things that came up when I came in January around what happens after the initial identification. They are utilizing tools at fourth grade and beyond to, to, as it, like a child's study model, to add students to the identified list from fourth grade through eighth grade. Other strengths are the commitment. Commitment both from your staff and from your community. Again, there's a definite support for the program and a desire by teachers beyond just the providers of the program, but teachers within the classroom recognizing the desire to and continue to enrich students' learning experience. And again, that, that came through in terms of a desire for a full continuum of enrichment. So one of the things that K-2, there are some opportunities, but it's more limited, as well as 10th through 12th grade. So currently, the program is really supporting more your three-through-nine population. So that came out as a strength being that you have that support, but also the desire for it to be the full continuum. And a desire for collaboration. Again, collaboration between the classroom teacher and the enrichment teachers. And then your resources. You do have dedicated knowledgeable, a department that's really vested in the students in the school community in understanding their role, their responsibilities, and, and wanting to continue to improve and wanting to learn more in terms of developing their skills and abilities, particularly around the Culturally Responsive Sustaining Education Framework also. Struggles. So some of the, the struggles that came out across the board. First one, probably not a big surprise, but time. There never is enough of it, right? And everyone has an opinion around how it should be used. And in that way, I think structurally, again, if we think about the RTI piece with math and ELA, I think that has, the use of time in those particular opportunities for students then means there isn't time for some other opportunities that could be available to students. So, so again, time becomes an obstacle or an area where the, how you decide to use it and for what instructional or educational experiences is something that was definitely clearly articulated. And at the sixth through 12th level with students, sometimes that was also around students' desire of how they want to use their time. Some of these experiences, particularly at the middle and high school level, are during flex time or lunch, which are their opportunities to do other work, to do their, their homework, or to socialize to some extent. And there were students who vocalized both the desire to like be with like peers at that opportunity and have more time for socialization, and others who said, I really want the opportunity to do my own thing. So that came out in terms of students' desire to have a say in that use of time. Again, the limited opportunities for K-2 came up. And at the high school level, the focus mainly on ninth. I will say there were, there are opportunities beyond ninth grade that Beth was providing, but not, not as extensively, right? As, as the focus on ninth grade. And one of the other pieces that I noticed was a desire for subject-specific opportunities beyond math and ELA. So again, interest in science and social studies, interest in STEAM, right? In some engineering and opportunities that might be beyond our more, you know, the focus on ELA and math. And then communication and identification. I think if I go back to the big-picture piece, I think communication, you can never have enough of it. And having more of communication around the big-picture goals and ideas helps to better clarify the intent, the purpose, and the outcomes of the program. And that's, that is definitely something that came out. There's confusion around what parts of the continuum or the program are for whom and, and what do they do, right? So that's the access, some of the access piece. And then that consistency, both vertically and horizontally. So level by level, going, you know, elementary to middle to high or across your, your four elementary buildings in particular. And so again, ties into the identification. There is lack of understanding around and clarity in how students are identified. And a big question that came up that I think, you know, is the change in need over time? And in both, sometimes in both ways. And in both, sometimes in both ways, right? The idea that we, we recognize that students may express interests or abilities and talents not just in third grade or not just in fifth grade, but you know, farther down the line. And/or that some of those kids, as they go farther down the line, again, want the ability to say, "I might want to change the amount of time I am focused on this piece of academics or this part of my learning." And that impacts students, you know, both in terms of their, that piece came up in terms of identification. Students, definitely there is an impact on students. And the tracking of participation is one of those pieces that I think makes it tricky. Because you're, you're really, right now, kind of highlight, you're able to track most readily that group of students that are identified through the process you have. So state, the suggestions kind of align really nicely with those struggles, right? The clear communication across all stakeholder groups came up over and over and over again. More communication, communication across for parents, students, and teachers. More opportunities for more students. Collaboration between the classroom teacher and enrichment teacher was another one. And then that, that idea of students' choice and involvement in, in that, in this, their program or their participation in the program. So my recommended next steps would be a broader, bigger, again, being that it's a review, it's the idea of really start articulating the alignment of your values and priorities with the program continuum, looking at the continuum and fleshing that out more clearly so it's communicated to everyone, involving your stakeholders in that process, especially the students and the student voice. So that you design that system that has an ongoing reflection process included. There are a lot of resources that can support that work. The National Association for Gifted Children revamped their standards in 2019. The use of the framework, the culturally responsive sustaining education framework is another really good resource. There is one other that I, North Carolina has a call to action around critical actions to realize equity and excellence in gifted education with six action items and a resource guide that would be a really good tool for the, the department and the district to look at as, as a way to, to do some of this work. Again, they talk about meaningful data and use of meaningful data as action item, I think, for no five. So this resource would be, I, you know, shared that with Dr. Malonias, would be a really good tool for the district to use. And then while you're developing a more long-range kind of goal and plan in that way, it's the reasonable adjustments that you want to also plan and kind of formulate and implement along the way. And, and we have done some of that, that has been done kind of throughout the process.
So thank you, Christine. I want to share some updates. As I mentioned previously, Christine, Carrie Young and I, Carrie Young is the K-12 Department Chair for Enrichment, we would meet as we worked through the, the program review, we would meet regularly. And as we worked through the program review, it became clear that over the years, particularly during the years of No Child Left Behind with the implementation of state testing, the opportunities within the K5 enrichment program became very narrowed. And as Christine mentioned, very focused on the RTI time and around that RTI focus. And interestingly, feedback from all stakeholders indicated, stakeholder groups indicated a need to review the opportunities offered at the elementary level in order to reach more students. So the program is reaching academically high achieving students, but what about students who have high ability in other areas? So, excuse me, based on this feedback, Carrie Young and I worked with the elementary enrichment teachers to modify the program at the K5 level to offer more school-wide opportunities as well as more choice for students. I think you heard Christine mention that opportunity for students and families to have choice. So let me walk you through what we have laid out for next year. As I mentioned, the school-wide opportunities at, and originally, I can remember when I came here 17 years ago, there were school-wide opportunities, K5, K8. And there still are school-wide opportunities at the, excuse me, at the middle school. But they have fallen, kind of been pushed aside at the elementary level. So looking at offering at least two opportunities per grade level, per semester, and really, how can we think outside of the box? And these opportunities may span multiple grade levels. So thinking about field trips, assemblies, possibly working with authors, author visits. The SEL block is a great time during the school day for these types of opportunities to occur because many of them fall under the umbrella of social emotional learning. That's why it's, it's really that overlap. Project Challenge, some of you may be familiar. Project Challenge is a longstanding program in Penfield. It is not, it will not be changing for next year. It provides an opportunity for students who are eligible for gifted services to dig deeper into units which stretch their thinking beyond the current grade level content. That will, has been at grades three, four, and five and will remain at grades three, four, and five. And will meet two or three days per five-day cycle, depending on, on the rotation. So as we transition, I know Dr. Potter has talked about transitioning away from RTI to a more MTSS, multi-tiered system of support, shifting to math extensions. So in Penfield, we have a robust acceleration process, acceleration opportunities in math. And the math extensions, during RTI math time, students who need math intervention receive the additional support from a math intervention teacher. Students who are working at grade level have the opportunity during this RTI math time to review content or make up any missed work with their classroom teacher. Those students who are ready for extensions will work on those extensions with the enrichment teacher. This is very similar to what's been done in the past. I know I received a phone call from a parent inquiring that the grapevine had, had said that we were getting rid of the math extensions and we are not. We're also not getting rid of acceleration in math, that's staying. But what is new are interest-based book studies at grades four and five. So during reading instruction, during reading time for grades four and five, students who are at grade level will have the opportunity to participate in book studies. And it really, the enrichment teachers are working this summer, doing curriculum work, designing these book study units. And the question was asked, "What if we have more students interested than we have slots or spots or seats in our classroom?" Then we'll offer more, we'll offer the unit multiple times. It really is about how do we provide access to all students who are interested? And how can we, so we're very excited to dig in. The teachers are, they have some really cool ideas for some units and I'll keep you updated on those. The academic extension blocks. So the feedback from, and Christine had this in the, in her presentation. The feedback from particularly primary teachers was, "Please, please, please, can my students in my classroom have access to enrichment?" And so we looked at, how could we, and this is where Christine's point around time comes into play. Because how do we make that time? What does, how do we carve out that time? What does that look like? And coincidentally, or maybe beneficially, at the elementary schedule, we modified with the implementation of the ICOT classes in our special education model. We, our K1 schedule piggybacks very nicely the K1 schedules. And the second and third schedules piggyback very nicely. Meaning that when kindergarten is in math, first grade is in reading. And so their times align nicely that we could build in these academic extension blocks. K1, second and third, and then fourth and fifth. And that will allow for those unique situations where students require academic extensions beyond the current offering and they, it's, it goes beyond simply providing the math extension or the, because to Christine's point, having that focus for the last number of years around math and ELA, we're missing that, students that have the high ability in other areas. And this will provide time for those students to access the enrichment teacher. And the enrichment teachers are really excited about this. The primary teachers particularly are really excited about this. And then the interest-based enrichment. So I don't have specifics on this because we are, again, the enrichment teachers, we have curriculum time that we will be working on. But one of the pieces of feedback was around the identification process. And our thought is to provide more opportunities prior to third grade that the enrichment teacher works with students at the K1 and 2 level so that they build a relationship with the students. They get to know the students as learners. And hopefully that will help, the feedback around the identification process is that it's very lengthy. And so we're looking at, how can we provide opportunities for the enrichment teachers and the students to connect, the enrichment teacher, learn who the student is as a learner, build those relationships? So the interest-based enrichment opportunities were something that were offered a number of years ago. And again, with implementation of state testing, kind of fell to the wayside. But it's really a menu of options that teachers provide, the enrichment teachers provide, and families have an opportunity for their child to participate in these interest-based opportunities. And the topics will vary, really looking to go across curricular areas. Before I wrap up, there was one other piece I wanted to share. It's escaping me. I do want to thank Christine for all of her hard work. As I shared, we met regularly throughout the process. And I think it's important, I was incredibly appreciative of Christine's unique lens coming into this. She taught enrichment at Scribner for a number of years. And so not only is she a certified gifted and enrichment teacher, she also has much of the historical knowledge of the program in addition to the relationships and trust with many of the current enrichment teachers, which I think was really helpful in being able for us to dig in deep and begin to really recognize what we, the potential that we have and where, where we're, where we can make changes. So, thank you, Christine, and I open the floor to questions.
Thank you so much. Let's see, regarding around identification, how much of the identification process, what percentage, you know, ish, is subjective versus objective? So you mentioned some testing, Sage and something else, I can't remember what it was. So I'm, I'm assuming that's sort of the more objective, you know, it's objective how you would do it. But then there's also other identification that goes on. And sort of, just to give you the big picture of where I'm going with this question, is, while you were talking, it was occurring to me like how weighty this is. So, you know, I have one child who is in enrichment in science and math in Bay Trail. And I could see how he's going to get done with Regents quicker. He's gonna have, be able to do more AP classes probably by the time he gets in high school because he's just doing it all sooner, quicker. And so that identification that he was strong in math and science happening, which actually was missed in third grade. But what happened at Bay Trail is going, it's sort of like the rich get richer. Like is setting him up to do more advanced math, do more advanced science in high school. So my other child is strong in other things, so I'm not worried about that. But if a lot of that process is subjective and could, there could be bias, that child might not have been identified. So, so it's, you know, I grew up in the era, to date myself, of tracking. Where if you start in track one, you end in track one, and those are much more college-bound students than track three. So it's, it's not a small thing if, if too large of a percentage of that identification process is subjective, is based on the vibe of a third-grade teacher who nationally, we know, we all have implicit bias. We know that racial bias, all of us in this room have. So it's not just, do you get to be in Project Challenge in third grade? It could potentially be, do you finish your algebra Regents in eighth grade so that you could start this in ninth grade so that you could take AP classes? And colleges love AP classes, I love AP classes. But it had, it could have a long range of consequence there.
So I, I think the opening up for more opportunities that are more broad help in, in diversifying the identification process, which is a piece that I think has to be really looked at. I don't know that I can give you percentages. I actually think though, so in third grade, they use the Otis Lennon assessment, which is a standardized normed measure, right? But I would actually say, along with other assessment data, that's math and, again, math and ELA-based and then teacher input as well. But there's also the bias within the assessments that I think is a concern, actually, that we, I've had the conversation with Leslie around because, again, too heavy of a focus on math or science in some ways can impact students as well, right? Based on experiences they've had, based on many different cultural factors that impact their, their performance. So that's a piece that, again, in, in the guy, that call to action, they talk about use of equitable identification practices and reframing your lens. Like there are how and why statements around the importance of these two pieces that I think have to be looked at and considered in order to, I would say, round out that process so that it isn't too heavily weighted in, in any one. Exactly, in any one area because I think that, you know, there is the possibility for that to be happening.
And in fact, really, the work that we've been doing around the professional learning of our biases, Nicole, you're, you're absolutely right. And I think in the past, we were focused on data. We have to have data to make these decisions and we need a lot of data. And it's really about not having gates and having voice and ensuring that the family's voice is represented, the student's voice is represented. Because I think that's a piece in this process that we, we learned is not present. And that's huge. And that's a huge piece of the culturally responsive sustaining education framework is student voice. is student voice and family voice. And to your point, it can't be heavily, the decision and recommendation can't be heavily weighted on one person.
Or at one level, right?
Or at one level.
So when you start to think about treating for bias, it's through the professional learning that we're structuring, first as an instructional leadership team, which then gets pushed to the building for faculty. So all of the experiences that we continue to expose our faculty to helps to disrupt bias. So the third principle of the culturally responsive sustaining education framework, inclusive curriculum and assessment, calls out the need to disrupt bias. So that's why, that's one of the foundational documents to help with determining and supporting this process in its entirety. But I think that the way that we move past that is the more awareness, the more conversations, the more professional learning that we're all engaging in. It helps us to get in a place where the bias isn't present when we're identifying our students. So I think that's, that's part of the work, but it's also our growth. And we know that we have a lot of work still to do, but it's a part of how we're, you know, structuring the work that we're doing with faculty.
I also think the communication around that then, so that families are aware and have an understanding and have the ability to have conversations with their children around choice in their experiences, how they're using their learning time. Like, all those pieces kind of play a part also, in helping to build those opportunities and bridges for people. At the high school level, it was interesting, so I, I met with two different student groups, and one of the students, actually, the one student group said, "This is for any student. We see this for any student, but we don't think that all students see it that way." So they recognize that enrichment isn't, that it's not about gatekeeping, that it isn't like a, only certain people can participate. But they also, you know, in, in their statement, recognize that not everybody sees it, or understands it in that way, right? So which is somewhat a communication piece, and really getting clear around, how do you enrich, what is enrichment? It includes extending, enriching, it can include acceleration, like there are many different aspects to, again, that continuum, that need to probably be laid out with clarity around what it looks like, what it sounds like, and where it's happening.
I would just add one piece of thinking, and I really like the onus on communication, because you sort of, I've been in this district a long time, I, I'm, it's always that question of, if a student gets into enrichment through the process, or doesn't, and then what happens? And being really clear with that communication, I know Dr. Maloney's all over that as we, as we look to build and shift. The one piece though, is that, just, is that if you are not identified for enrichment at elementary school, you, you can still accelerate in math and science at Bay Trail. So there are, just, you know, so if you aren't in Project Challenge or anything at elementary school, when you get to seventh grade and you're looking at taking living environment or algebra, which are the two high school regions-bearing courses at Bay Trail that we offer, those are students who, some are enrichment, some aren't, some are enrichment students, but choose not to take one or both of those. So that acceleration versus enrichment is, is some, just a note, I don't want families to think you've got to be in enrichment in elementary school to be able to accelerate in math and science in eighth grade in Bay Trail, because that's, that again, is, is a, those gates aren't there. There's conversations around looking at multiple data points, because we want students to be successful, we want them to feel that success, but ultimately, those are, are open for, for all students, the challenge.
Thank you so much Christine, for your presentation. And I'm really, I'm really happy to hear that you were given this opportunity, opportunity to do the review of our enrichment program. Throughout my children's high school careers, and friends' childrens, like, I've always seen the enrichment program for the elite. Okay? And it's, if you don't make it into Project Challenge, if the third-grade teacher doesn't like you, if you are not testing well, if you miss the testing score by .04, you know? And for a lot of our children, for a lot of our students, that puts a wall right there for them, because they have this feeling of, "I'm not enough. I'm not good enough to be in Project Challenge." And those Project Challenge kids, those enrichment kids are super special, and I'm not. So I'm really, really pleased to hear that your suggestions were spot-on, the communication. Like, could we ever have too much communication? No, never, right? And then your, your suggestion of expanding the enrichment program. Just because I don't excel at math and ELA, doesn't mean I'm a poor student. Like, I could totally rock that science, the social studies, the history, the art, the music. You know, there's so many avenues that we can take and show our kiddos, that, yeah, you're great, you're fabulous, you have some magic hair in you, that you can share with the world, okay? And then I'm, I'm stuck on, you had mentioned that there was some discrepancies in the socioeconomic part of enrichment. Could you, could you like elaborate on that for me?
So, again, I, I took the data that I was provided by the district and looked at, and did percentage correlations. So like, so, for example, third grade, right? Nine percent of the students in the grade level were identified for Project Challenge. And then I looked at the percentage of different groups, so example, like, so female, male. There are 50%, 50% of the students are female in that grade level, 50% are male, and your PC population, 47 are female, 53% are male.
Okay.
So if the numbers, so that, a difference of three percentage points, right? Doesn't seem like a large discrepancy. But in that grade level, your soc, your percentage of students identified or in your socioeconomic status group, which is your free and reduced lunch population, is 22%. And there are no students identified for PC.
Right.
Who would also be identified in that demographic.
Right.
So that, and that was true in most grade levels, for that particular area. It's a tricky piece, I did, you know, in terms of digging into, but I think it speaks to some of the ways in which the assessments might be leaning towards student experience and cultural pieces, that impact students' ability to show their performance and their abilities, in the current way that, that you're identifying, right? So again, this is where I would say, going back to exploring, you know, avenues for expanding the way in which you're looking at students. Because we, you know, and again, it goes back to differences in just, are they strong in your academic field versus non-verbal reasoning, or creative and critical thinking? Music, again, you could go in all kinds of different areas, and the definition, the state definition is broader than academic, when you talk about high-ability students, right? But again, we've, you've kind of focused in on that particular area. So that was one, one particular data point that across the grade levels was pretty consistent.
Okay.
Where there was a much larger difference between the percentages than a 5%, you know, gap. And that might not be, that might be too high. 5% might seem, you know, and looking at this data more closely, you might say, I still think, you know, if there are 5% of the grade level students are Hispanic or Latino, and I don't have any students identified who are Hispanic or Latino, that's not, that's not okay, right?
And like, could it be a communication problem?
Exactly. So what I would say is, you, you want to look at this data as a means to start to look at root cause, right? Or ways to then inform the way in which your, your systems and processes are set up, to change that. But again, I also don't know that I would only go back to these percentages down the line, as you're looking at that reflection process, of being the only means of saying, "Oh, have we done a better job of providing access, or meeting the needs of our students?" There are a lot of other success measures that you could also incorporate into your program, to say, "Now I feel like, you know, again, we had, maybe it comes down to, we had 75 kids in fourth grade who participated in the interest, in the book interest experience, and the outcome of that learning was, even some of their feedback from what they learned, might provide you with better evidence of the success of that opportunity than, than a straight number." So.
Sorry, I know you already asked a question, do you want to ask one more?
Or somebody else first?
No, I just have, I don't know if it's a question, it's more of a wondering, if, when you were looking at that data, I agree that we need communication, but I'm also thinking of our youngest learners, if they're, if the skillset at home isn't strong enough to understand the impact of not participating in that. Like, as a district, we also need to be looking at, not necessarily just communicating, but how we're getting the info, I guess it is a form of communication, but making sure that we're advocating for those kiddos that may not have the home support to push them in that direction. Does that make sense? I don't know that I communicated that clearly at all.
Yes. And I think in the culturally responsive sustaining education framework, one of the pieces around the asset-based ped, asset-based pedagogy and thinking, I think that's a piece of the professional learning for the adults, that helps us a little bit in that area, because I don't disagree that, because there, the other piece would be, again, not too much over-reliance on communication as the only means also, if, if you think about your English language learners, right? There's an area, again, where they're learning the language, that doesn't necess, that doesn't mean that they're not a high-ability learner, right? Or, or, you know, that they don't have talents and expertise that can be developed. But we have to then, again, look at it in that broader context. So it's bringing in cultural elements, in addition to the straight, hard data, student achievement performance, that I think would get at some of those pieces in particular.
So I have a question, then you can go. How, K-2, how are students, what are your thoughts on how they're going to be identified?
So, whoever's running the, yes, thank you. Yep.
There you go, we got it.
So, there's a number of ways for students to be identified. And I think, looking at, let's start with the school-wide opportunities. That's going to be, students and families will have an opportunity to indicate that they're, there's interest in participation. Teachers also can, because to Christine's point, in some, it's, it's all family-dependent, in some situations, the student needs a little nudging, the family needs that encouragement and that nudging to participate. So that may come from the family, from the student, from the teacher, as well as the enrichment teacher. Looking at Project Challenge, we will keep the, the same identification process, but to Christine's point, looking at the tools that we're using, as well as, how do we include the parent and student voice, and, for participation? The academic extension blocks, those really, we've already started involving families, and it's already come from students, families, teachers identify, again, identifying, this child needs extensions beyond what I'm able to offer in the classroom as the teacher, how can we make that work? And so we've met with some families. I, I anticipate that that will grow once we share. So in terms, in terms of communication, I will be putting something out in the prestige, for the next upcoming prestige, and then a specific parent square enrichment update relative to this program review, as well as these specific updates. At second grade, it will be interest-based, but families will also, students and families will be able to, to review the menu of options and make decisions for their child.
I think that's great, because it, you, it'll keep students excited.
I think so too.
And engaged, like my youngest, she was like, she doesn't put 100% effort, because she's like, "What's the point?", you know? And so I think catching her at a younger age might have, you know, kept her where she should be.
And something that might interest her, that's not just math or ELA.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
Okay. We've been talking about the socio-economic piece, and, you know, where there's discretionary time and money, that's a huge asset, that's a huge purpose. I mean, just even thinking about the robotics team, when they were talking about 20 to 40 hours, well, that's somebody bringing you here, that's, and, and you get rewarded by a reduced price to go to Texas if you put in more time. So, so students who have, whose parents have discretionary time and money are set up to succeed, because also, there's somebody at home, if there's discretionary time, there's somebody at home to make sure you're doing your math homework, to help you with your math homework. And, you know, that's been, there's lots of studies going on right now, in terms of increasing people of color in STEM at a college level, and it goes back down to high school, the kids who are in robotics teams and robotics camps in the summer. And who are those kids? Those kids are people whose parents have discretionary time and money. So if we want to increase the number of black people, for example, in STEM and college, you have to go back to that. Because it has nothing to do with ability.
Right.
It's, it's, it's socioeconomic privilege. So, I'm, I'm wondering about the K-5 student, who, who has the potential to be really bright in math, but there's no one at home to help me with my math. So, I know that the school can't fill in every, every hole that there is. But when you have discretionary time and money, so many things can be taken care of at home. And when those things aren't there, the school has to step in and take care of a little bit more, like that kid who's gifted, who just doesn't have somebody at home to say, "Ah, that division, you did that wrong, let's do it again." Because the gifted students have somebody at home, it's not that they could just do it all themselves. They just have somebody at home saying, "You're, let's do another long division, let's do it again, Johnny."
I, I, I think that, there's no, I, I don't know that there's a perfect system, right? But I do think having more of the diverse experiences of interest-based and academic focus allows for educators to get an opportunity to see some of that. I also think at the, at the middle school level, then, they're using a talent hunt survey form, that, I, I mean, I think that talent hunt piece could be explored in greater depth, in order to look for more of the observational evidence of students having that without having the experience, right? Because I hear what you're saying, I think that is, that is very true, right? And, and we can't make up for all aspects of those pieces with, in the educational setting, but we want to do our best to use the time we have with students to build those pieces. So I think it, it is multiple data points that are, that are, that provide for teachers to see those, even the potential, versus even the current performance, right? I think that is a big piece of trying to build in different opportunities and, and entry points kind of along the way. I think mid-year, we talked about that a little bit, the dipstick piece, or concept of not just also a one-and-done entry point, can help with that. I don't know if it does everything. You know, I go back to the, to the language, you know, piece of that. Like, as the example, again, of like, not all students, their language development, right, is different across, across the scheme, and some of that comes down to how much oral communication is there in different opportunities for them. In the classroom, we, we then have to take advantage of our time to build those skills, if it's not something that they've had the opportunity to understand. So again, that, it can be tricky, right? Particularly in content area and standards. One of the- One of the things I would say is they have to have had the experience in order for you to be able to identify that. So these, the academic extensions, if you go back to more of the ELA math piece, you have to teach it first in order to then say, do, did they develop the skills and understanding in that area, and to what extent, to know what the extension might look like. But again, that's an area I definitely think has to be explored in greater depth, so that you are, you know, doing your due diligence to do your best to find those opportunities for kids. It's, it's harder when, particularly when you know what your experiences are, too, you know, again, it's, so that piece is, is going to have to be part of the ongoing growth and development.
Thank you.
Sure. One comment, one question, then I'm done. So my comment is, you mentioned when you spoke to student groups, how they saw it, and like, out of the mouth of babes, right? They saw enrichment is for everyone, okay? And they want it to be like that, all right? And also, they want to have autonomy over their time, because I've met a lot of enrichment kids, it was great in elementary school, and now I'm stuck with these same people, okay? And I'm taken away from my friends, because they've had an opportunity to make other friends, however, that happens through sports, clubs, whatever. So I think that's a really important piece. If a student does not want to participate in enrichment anymore, they should not have to. And if we are broadening enrichment, like you suggested, they can take part in other things, like, hey, maybe we start a public speaking in grade two, you know, like, there's so many avenues to explore. So I really think we need to listen to our students, and I appreciate you documenting that and saying that out loud. And then my question is, were you given, did you have access to any data when it came to enrichment in our urban to suburban kiddos?
I didn't have specifics in terms of, if, if they're part of the data that I, the numbers that I received, which I think they would be.
Yeah.
I don't know who they are, though, so I wasn't looking at any.
Okay, so there wasn't any specific.
There wasn't an identifier, no, for urban suburban.
Okay, all right.
In the data that I had.
All right, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, and I appreciate, yeah, this, enrichment has been a thorn in my side for many years, and I'm really, really happy that we're digging into this and taking care of this, because I want all students to know that they are enough, and that there is something for everyone, not just math and ELA. Okay, so, thank you, Christine. Okay, I'm going to stop talking now.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
I think I like the computer better. Okay, Superintendent?
Wait, no. That concludes special reports.
Oh, thank you, that concludes special reports, that's why.
That's why.
Okay.
I know, I'm trying to figure out the paper or the computer.
We do give our student rep the summer off, so, so I won't be outshined by our student rep who presents, but we do have a few superintendent reports. I have just a couple of student staff honors, an update briefly, I'll turn it over to Dr. Driffl for business updates. This is our reorg meeting, it's a required meeting that has to take place within the first two weeks in New York State for all public schools, and so lots of things get set that are on the agenda, and Dr. Driffl will talk a little around that, and then we'll go to Dr. Maloney for a professional learning plan presentation overview. And so, just my updates is just a thank you to the board who was able to attend our Penfield High School graduation, as well as huge congratulations to all of our class of 2023. It was, I think it was a great event, I think Mrs. Watt, our high school principal, and her team did an incredible job organizing that event and getting everybody at RIT. And so, again, huge congratulations, lots of photos on social media from the, from our director of communication, Nancy Bradstreet, all around, lots of graduation pictures, so please take a look. And then, thank you to our transportation department, who every year attends the Independence Day Parade dressed in lots of various characters, it is always, again, a lot, a lot of fun and great, I think, PR from our transportation folks who are out there supporting Penfield at the Independence Day Parade.
First year with the electric bus as well.
And is the first year, I see that, that is the electric bus, first year with the electric bus, so that's awesome, so just again, kudos in all the work that they do. Now they're in the process of gearing up for all of our routes come September, so there is, there is a nice reminder that we are really happy our students and our, and our teachers get the summer off to prepare, but school keeps on going for us and lots of work happening all summer. Just a couple of updates, and I know we've already talked about it, but just wanted to say welcome to Dr. Elman Turner as our newest board member in this three-year term, we really look forward to working with you and having you on the board, so thank you so much, and congratulations. And also thank you to Mrs. Khan for being re-elected to the board for a three-year term.
You're welcome.
And I'm really happy, really happy to get to know you this year, and continue working with you, so just congratulations to both of you, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Driffl for business updates.
All right, thanks, Dr. Putnam. Not a lot for me tonight, as Dr. Putnam mentioned, this is the reorganizational meeting, so the first meeting of the fiscal year, fiscal year runs from July 1st to June 30th in schools, different agencies around the state are a little different, some are April 1st to March 30th, but schools are July 1st. So that list of organizational items is mostly required by the state, so it's a list of internal assignments, roles, responsibilities, external partnerships with professional service providers, architects, attorneys, physicians, those kind of things. Not a ton of material changes this year, so if there are any questions on any of those, I think 50 bullet items, I'm sure one of us would be able to answer, as you consider approval of that action item this evening. Secondly, we have a school physician contract, so that contract amount is over $20,000 per year, so we asked the Board of Education in support of our compliance policy to approve that contract. We also have three service contract renewals, the first of which is an intermunicipal arrangement with the Monroe County Sheriff's Office for fuel purchasing. So if you don't know, the county sheriff sometimes fuels up their cars over at our current bus garage, and then we build them back for the use of that, that's a longstanding agreement. The second of which is a software renewal with Panorama, and the third of which is a continued partnership with Villa for Hope, something that we've continued to do in our schools and are looking to extend. We have two tax tertiary settlements, so we're hoping to have these at the June meeting, they've kind of been sitting out there for about a month and a half now, but we got them to you tonight. So there are two, we have about a dozen outstanding, the first of which has a refund associated with it, we generally try to avoid refunds in the settlement process, but because the petitioner had had claims in for so many years prior, the petitioner and the town agreed to this, and then we, as a taxing jurisdiction, also have to approve of the tertiary settlement. The second one, there's no refund associated, it's just a reduction in assessment moving forward on a go-forward basis. And then we have a tax exemption modification, so those that were on the board last spring, I think it was February 2022, we adopted the volunteer firefighter and ambulance exemption, but at the time, based on some work from our local legislators, that was only a Monroe County program. So then in advocacy over the course of this year, that was expanded to all counties across the state, became a statewide program. So now we need to update our language, so that if we have residents that live in Wayne County, so Walworth or Mastin, which is part of our, our school district, they would be eligible for the tax exemption. They wouldn't get it this upcoming tax season, because the tax rules are already finalized, so it'll go into effect in the 24, 25 year, so next fall's tax collection. And then it's not directly a financial item, but we also have on the docket for approval the district-wide safety plan. There were no modifications from the presentation that Mr. Fox and Mr. English made to the board at the public hearing at the end of May. And that is it for me tonight. Any questions, comments?
I have a question. Thank you, Dr. Driffl, Driffl, for pronouncing that word. That's not how I would have pronounced it. Can you say it again for me, please?
Sertieri.
Sertieri, okay.
Perfect.
And could you?
That was excellent.
Thank you, thank you. And could you explain to our folks and community, like, what exactly that is?
Absolutely. So every year, residents have an opportunity to file a small claims assessment review regarding their home assessment from a residential basis, but a tertiary process is kind of like the commercial application. So assessments that are very large, that would be outside of like the assessment purview, goes through a different process through the town. Because there can be such drastic effects, particularly in small towns, if you have one big business in the center of town and they're lobbying to change their assessment, that can have a big dramatic effect on rates. In a town as big as Penfield, it doesn't have as big of an effect, but that system is in place, so that there's attorneys involved, it's a town attorney, it's a school's attorney, it's not just me in a room with the petitioner saying, okay, I think it's this, they're really applying the science and they're specialized in doing so. And like I said, some of these have been hanging out there for years that they've been negotiating, so it's, it's not a cut-and-dry process, it's complicated, so hopefully that gives some context to the process.
Just the word alone gives context. I had to look it up.
Okay.
Yeah, so thank you, Dr. Driffl.
We usually just call them tax certs.
Cert, yeah.
Yeah.
Way easier to say.
Sertieri. Okay. Yeah.
Other questions for Dr. Driffl?
I'm glad.
He's not going anywhere, he's here, so if you think of any. And I'll turn it over to Dr. Maloney.
So tonight, I have the professional learning plan for you to approve, the district is required to maintain and update a professional learning plan for, that represents five years out, and as you may recall, our Director of Professional Learning, Kevin Marriott, maintains the plan, and it, Kevin has done a, an amazing job updating the plan and really restructuring it to align with the culturally responsive sustaining education framework and our district priorities. Each year, the, each year, the Board of Education approves the professional learning plan. This year, the updates are minimal, there are names of new individuals on the committee, we had some folks retire and leave their positions, so Mr. Marriott has updated the individuals on the committee. There were some errors in terms of the years on some of the pages. CTLE sponsors, so CTLE is the credit that certified teachers and teaching assistants are required to, the hours that they're required to, of professional learning in order to maintain their certification, and the state recognizes which organizations, which consultants can be used as CTLE sponsors, and that we can then award that CTLE credit. Kevin has done an amazing job of working through the process of having many of the folks that, many of the consultants that we work with become CTLE sponsors, so that our teachers were really maximizing their opportunities for professional learning and earning of that credit. The mentor and peer checklist, so peer, New York State requires that all new teachers have mentors. If a teacher was tenured in another district, they do not have to have a mentor, but coming from outside of the district, we feel it's important to provide a peer, which is someone to support that teacher as they transition. There are checklists in the professional learning plan as the append, as part of the appendices, which outline throughout the course of the school year, topics that the mentor or peer should be sure to address. And we discovered that many of those, with the evolution or the COVID experience, much of what was on those checklists needed to be updated in terms of systems and processes, so those have been updated. Again, I can't say enough about the awesome work that Mr. Marriott does, he is awesome at all professional learning, and you have the plan to take a look at if you have any questions.
Board members' questions or comments? Okay, thank you.
That concludes superintendent reports.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Okay, we are on organizational items, number eight, A, eight A, yes. I have a recommended action that the board approves organizational items eight, A1 through eight A50 for the 2023-2024 school year. Do I have to read, do I read all six?
No, everything is in the agenda, so you don't need to read through all 50, 50 comments, but it's all on the agenda for people to read.
Okay, all right. Okay, so resolved, the Board of Education affirms and readopts the following policies and directs that they be communicated to all employees, code of ethics for all district personnel, policy 6110, reporting and investigation of allegations of fraud, policy 5000, and Medicaid compliance plan, policy 5775. Resolved, the Board of Education appoints the following advisors, firms, and officers to the board for the 2023-2024 school year, as is in the agenda, quite low. Resolved that the Board of Education appoints Aaron Rebholz as claims auditor for the 2023-2024 school year, and be it further resolved that in the absence of the claims auditor, Judy Damiano is authorized to perform the duties of the claims auditor, and be it further resolved that in the absence of Aaron Rebholz and Judy Damiano, Christine Schulte is authorized to perform the duties of the claims auditor. Resolved that the Board of Education authorize the Assistant Superintendent for Business and Finance to serve in the capacity of acting superintendent of schools when the superintendent of schools is unavailable during the 2023-2024 school year.
You are fine, and you can read all of them if you want as board president. You don't have to read, you can go right down to the vote, because it is all in the agenda.
That is just.
It's up to you, though.
Amazing, no, I, I will go all the way down to, oh my goodness.
I thought that's what, when you asked, do I have to read all that stuff?
No, I thought you meant.
No, you're good.
Okay. I have a motion in a second that the above organizational items, oh yeah, A8A1 through eight A50 be approved for the 2023-2024 school year, instead of me reading it all.
Don't move.
I'll second it.
Motion by Krista, second by Kristin. Board members, all those in favor? Thank you. All those in favor and unopposed?
I didn't know how long I should let you go.
Yeah, thank you, like, like you, I saw you smiling next to me.
Well, I did turn to Dr. Driffl, and I wanted you to get to the point where he's in charge when I'm unavailable, and so I want to make sure that was clear, and then we're good.
At least I didn't hear you giggling over there. Yeah, I was like, uh, help me. Okay, no public comments, so we will go down to financial items 11, the school physician It is necessary to approve the contract terms and conditions for a school physician, Dr. Robert Toot, for the 2023-2024 school year, per the terms of RFP 1810. The contract amount is $30,430.72, a 3.5 increase over the prior year based upon the PAC contract. contract. Dr. Toot's contract runs August 1st, 2023, to July 31st, excuse me, 2024. May I have a motion in a second that the Board of Education authorizes the Superintendent of Schools or is designated to execute a contract between Dr. Robert Toot and the district for the 2023-2024 school year?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Kristin, second by Krista. Board members, all those in favor? All in favor and unopposed?
So these are the same where you, you can read everything, but Dr. Driffl referenced this, and everything is in the agenda, if you do want to go to, just to the resolution and vote.
Thank you. Therefore, be it resolved that the Superintendent of Schools is hereby authorized to extend the intermunicipal agreement with the County of Monroe for the provision of vehicular refueling by the county for the period of September 1st, 2023, through August 31st, 2024. May I have a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second. Motion by Nicole, second by Aleah. Board members, all those in favor? All in favor and unopposed? We are on the Panorama contract renewal. This one I can just skip to?
Yep.
Okay.
And just as a reminder, the Panorama contract is, we're renewing for this year. They work with us and many districts across our area to support our SEL surveys in order to, as it references there, really to measure and support student staff skills like responsible decision-making, self-efficacy, social awareness, and self-management. So they've, we'll provide more information if the board approves as we head into the school year.
Okay, the contract is not to exceed $28,500 and will be paid through the American Rescue Plan, ARP funding. May I have a motion in a second that the Board of Education authorizes the Superintendent of Schools to enter into a contract with Panorama for the 2023-2024 school year?
So moved.
Second. Board members, all those in favor? All those in favor and unopposed? Next is the contract with Villa of Hope. May I have a motion in a second that the Board of Education authorizes the Superintendent of Schools to enter into a contract with Villa of Hope?
Second.
Did you get?
I didn't hear the motion.
Nicole, motion by Nicole, second by Kristin. Board members, all those in favor? All those in favor and unopposed?
These next two Dr. Driffl talked about, but maybe, maybe we should have Krista say the word? I'm just kidding.
Cert.
I actually really like your vulnerability because some people know that I was in speech services as a child through most of my schooling, so certain words like that, I find every way to get around it. I can read it, I know what it is, but saying it out loud in public is terrifying, so thank you.
Okay, the next order of business is the proposed tax certsary settlement with Limestone Development. Do I have a motion in a second to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Motion by Kristin, second by Nicole. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? All in favor and unopposed? Next is the, next certsary settlement? The next order of business is the proposed tax certsary settlement with WF5 Mile. Do I have a motion in a second to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second. Motion by Krista, second by Kristin. Any discussion? Okay, board members, all those in favor? All in favor and unopposed? Next is the RPT exemption. The next order of business is the proposed real property tax exemption for the 2024-2025 school tax year. Do I have a motion in a second to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second. Motion by Kristin, second by Nicole.
Yeah, possible roll call vote, so I'll just go through each, each person. Emily?
Aye.
Kristin?
Aye.
Krista?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Aleah?
Aye.
Okay, motion passed.
Thank you. Next is textbook approval.
So just for this, this was presented at our last board meeting, and we have not received any comments. Just as a reminder, the books, when we present them at a board, textbooks for approval, they get presented, and then they go to the district office where they're on display, where people can come and stop by. Also, the public library, and working with Dr. Maloney, those moving forward will be like at the desk, so you just have to go up and ask to see the book, and we'll work with the library for that. Is that correct? Thank you. But no, no comments came in about, community comments came in about the book presentation.
Okay, may I have a motion in a second to approve the textbook, Patriot and Saints of Nothing?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Krista, second by Kristin. Board, all those in favor? All in favor and unopposed? Policies for first reading?
Yeah, so the policy for first read is actually the district code of conduct, and so that was what our public hearing is, but because it is also a policy, we just wanted it here, so when we go to potentially have the board vote at the next meeting, it'll, it'll change the policy itself. And again, that is online, right on the district site. If you go to policies, you'll be able to see policies under review, and the whole document is there.
Thank you. Policies for second reading and approval?
I will share that these were presented the last meeting, and we did get some, a couple of comments around 8360 from, actually from board members and staff, and so we've made some changes which are in there noted. So just some minor changes to that policy, but no other comments from the community on any of the other policies.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
May I have a motion in a second that the above policies be approved as presented?
So moved.
Second. Motion by Kristin, second by Krista. Board members, all those in favor? All in favor and unopposed? Next is approval of the District Emergency Response Plan. May I have a motion in a second that the Emergency Response Plan be approved as presented on May 23rd, 2023, per Commissioner's Regulation Section 155.17 E3?
So moved.
Second. Motion by Aleah, second by Kristin. Board members, all those in favor? All in favor and unopposed? So the annual, the NISBA Annual Convention and Education Expo is going to be in Buffalo this year, October 26th through the 28th, and registration opens on August 8th.
So for board members who are interested in attending, I believe it's just letting Kathleen know, and prior to that date, and she, I think you register, folks, for NISBA?
I will.
Do you take care of that? So just like, take a look at your calendars. That, that NISBA is the New York State, New York State School Board Association, which the district belongs to, and is typically a really strong conference. It's nice that I think it's closer to home, but it's still, you know, goes through those days, and I encourage board members to, if available, to consider attending.
So do you have to, can you register and only go to part of it, or do you have to attend it all?
The way it usually works is that if you register, it's, the cost is the cost, but because it is closer, if there are days you can't go, that, that is okay. Yeah, so they don't give us a, like a discount if you can't go to the whole thing, but we are members of NISBA, and if we get into the early bird registration, the cost is not significant.
And then committee assignments. You guys can look over the committees and then just send an email or talk to Kristin or myself, and let us know what you guys are interested in as far as committees go, and then we will do the assigning of the committees and let you guys know.
And typically, we get dates, right? That we already know about?
We should be getting those.
Right. I feel like they come this month.
I was looking at those this week.
Okay, yeah. So we'll send out dates, so everyone can look at their calendars, too.
Is there a specific number of committees we need to be on, or?
Well, typically, it really depends on your schedule. We are trying to put the best fit, so typically people are on two committees, maybe two district committees, and maybe one of the...
Subcommittees.
Yeah, the subcommittees.
I know we talked about looking at our board evaluation that we did, too, to talk about restructuring things.
Well, so we are going to, I think, have a workshop this summer.
Yeah.
Where we can discuss...
That hasn't been scheduled or anything yet, but we'll work on that.
Right, right, yeah. So we'll get that back to you, and then go from there, kind of just looking it over as a whole board.
And we can decide how extra we need to be.
Yes, actually, yeah.
I'll just note, Emily, looking at some of these, we, we might look like code of conduct, this last year was a, was a monthly commitment. This year, we've sort of looked at as being a review, you know, just to sort of check in and see how we're doing, so less time commitment than, than last year. And same with DEI Core as our shift from our DEI committees, as we've, Dr. Potter talked about at the last board meeting, is sort of shifting into, it's been sort of district-led and now pushing into buildings, and so may not need board members on that committee unless they're very interested, but they'll be more building-based. So we'll work through that, but as, we can work together when people show their interest and where they are, and then, and some of these meetings, it's where the time is, like sort of, are they during the day, are they after? And so we can work through that as well, make sure people know what they're signing up for.
All right, so there's no unfinished business? Is there any new business?
Nope.
Okay, so may I have a motion in a second that the meeting be adjourned at 8:54 PM?
So moved.
Second. Motion by Krista, second by Aleah. All those in favor? All in favor and unopposed?